Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is March 24th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We are meeting in the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. Uh, this is an in-person meeting. If anybody would like to speak tonight, I'd ask that you step up to the podium when it's, uh, time and that you identify yourself and your project. For this first item on our agenda, we have 310 Kenneth Welch, which is Jeffrey McQuesson. And it's a site plan review. McQuiston, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. My name is Ryan Cook. I'm the Executive Vice President of Operations for JUCI. Um, I'll be speaking on behalf of the 310 Kenneth Welch Drive Project for parking. Um, so we, um, thanks for having me, but we, you know, had an opportunity to be in front of you guys, although via Zoom, so this was nice to, uh, to do it in person, but about, about a month and a half ago or two months ago roughly. Um, and you guys did obviously approve our temporary parking, which we appreciate. We've had the ability to put that in. Um, it is, uh, um, you know, I think based on some conversation that we have with you guys, a ground milled asphalt material, which is really nice. It's created a really, um, solid parking area. We did stripe it. Um, striping is holding up really nicely, including even in the rain that I was, uh, you know, just checking out before I obviously came over. So we're, we're very happy about the way that the temporary parking is working. We obviously realized that just about three weeks ago, you guys provided some additional comments in regard to the property in general, not just specific to the temporary parking that we were looking at, but more as a comprehensive look at, at the entire parking area. So, um, we've been working with Vega, which is the new landlord of, of the building here. They've been engaging a new architecture group and landscaping group that's going to be handling some of the additional requests that you guys had, uh, had referenced there. And so, um, you know, I think at this, uh, at this point in time, unfortunately, it was just that three week time period for us communicating with them and being able to get something, you know, done to, to present to you guys tonight was unfortunately just not possible. We are working diligently and working with Vega, the, the landlord. In fact, they're one of the representatives is here tonight with us as well. And so, um, but we just wanted to, you know, be able to at least come in tonight, explain, you know, the current situation, where we're at, and then, you know, see how we can make this work for a period of time. Obviously, you know, I think what we would be looking at is potentially requesting additional extension of that temporary parking area so that we can, you know, present a, a final layout to you guys that, that is complete. Now, obviously, the parking area that we had already established is something that, you know, we would anticipate being a part of the, uh, the larger project. But for right now, I think it's, it's probably in all of our best interests to complete those drawings and make sure that we bring something to you guys that is again comprehensive with everything that you'd asked.
Agreed. I mean, you guys are welcome to talk about anything you'd like to tonight. You know, we appreciate you coming in. I believe Mark, our planner, did present a, a letter to you guys with some recommended changes. We're probably going to want to do a peer review of the stormwater drainage on that once it's completed, but we probably don't want to request that tonight just because you don't have the updated plan, so it wouldn't be
Understood.
wise to do that. It would be a waste of money.
Okay.
That said, we, I guess what I would go into tonight is we have some comments, one that I think is important. The Board of Health, uh, they sent out a memo to the planning board. We received a copy of the site plan for 310 Kenneth Welch Drive. The plan proposes to lower the existing grade over the leaching area. The proposed changes would reduce the amount of cover over the leaching pipes to less than the minimum required. Also, the asphalt pavement section detail on the detail sheet, sheet shows 16.5 inches of bituminous concrete and gravel subgrade. To install 16.5 inches of material and meet the proposed grades would require the removal of part of the leaching area. This change would damage the existing leaching pipes and the septic system would no longer be in compliance. Please have the applicant confirm the elevation of the existing leaching pipes and adjust the elevations over the leaching area to fulfill the minimum requirements, uh, the cover requirements. The applicant should refer to the Zenith Consulting Engineers Subsurface Sewerage Disposal Plan dated 8/12/19, revised 9/4/19, which shows the elevations in the leaching pipes. So I assume that the revised plan is probably more of an as-built. Therefore, based on the information provided to the Board of Health, we would like the applicant to confirm the elevation of existing leach, uh, of the existing leach are prior to making any changes to the grade in the area over the leaching area. If you should have any further questions, feel free to contact this office. And that's from our health agent, Edward Cullen.
Okay.
Did you get a copy of this or?
I don't know, but I, I personally received it.
We'll make sure you get an electronic one, but I'll give you one tonight as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
There was another comment from, uh, the fire chief. Uh, this document has been written as a comment on the planning board application submitted for 310 Kenneth Welch Drive, prepared February 3rd, 2022. Lakeville Fire Department has no comment on the planned submission as drawn. But then he makes a comment. The applicant must be aware that the fire department access shall be maintained at all times during the process. All plans and activities related to this construction will account for this access necessary. Additionally, there are outstanding conditions from a previous permit application. They include requirement, uh, required improvements to the existing building-wide fire alarm system, coverage and the installation of a fire alarm radio box transmitter. The fire department through Northeast Alternatives and JUCI has requested a meeting with the new building owners to, and existing tenants to address, uh, the failure to comply with previous communicated requirements. There has no been, there been no response to this request. So I think that that's more building permit related, not, uh, planning board related. So I'm not going to dwell on it, but that's something I think that you do probably want to address.
Absolutely. We're, uh, we are addressing that, I think, as it, as it referenced there. But, um, no, we're definitely taking it very seriously with them.
Okay, great. Uh, well, I think the fire access does sort of pertain to us. And I think that there originally was a, a fire lane around the back of the building. So we want to make sure that that does remain open and accessible for a fire truck to get. I think there's a requirement of 150 feet that they need to get alongside of a building.
Yes.
Clear if the building is, or. You'd have to.
Yeah, I'm, I was working through that with them today. In fact, we were just, we were looking at that. So we're definitely, I mean, all of those comments that you've obviously identified in, in the initial correspondence, you know, are obviously being addressed. It's part of our, uh, changes there. You know, I think as soon as we can get those concluded and get that back into you guys. So I mean, I think that's why for, for us, it's really trying to understand that timing. And although, uh, I, I, you know, obviously us not being the building owners, I'm not directing that. These individuals are not under our, uh, a contract with us, but we are obviously very motivated and, and, and working with Vega to, uh, to push that along. So, um, so I would anticipate that you're probably looking at a 45 to 60 day time period to be able to get drawings and, and realistically get that back to you guys. I guess that's where I would love to talk to you tonight about, you know, understanding, uh, what, what you guys feel comfortable with in, in an extension of that temporary parking area while we produce these plans and get them back to you.
What's your recommendation, Mark?
So the temporary parking was approved about a month ago.
Somewhere in February, I think we did that.
It was about a month and a half ago.
They just completed it recently, I think.
So my recommendation would be, so it's 90 days. So I would prefer you to come back.
Could we do like 45 days maximum, at least to report back to us with progress?
That's correct. So early May, we'll put you on the first meeting of May. Just to come in and give us an update. If a full set of plans are filed or an application with the zoning or the conservation commission for wetlands delineation is filed, that's great. That means you're moving forward with the entire property, not just a little piece of it. And, um, and so it'll be just a quick five-minute update. And that's, that's perfect and not, you don't need a whole team. But, uh, I think that would be, make sense.
Okay.
And then at that time, if we see progress, the board should vote at that time to extend the, not, and not the 90 days, but that.
Or, or whatever deemed, I mean, if they've got pretty far along in the plans and maybe it's, and maybe just another meeting at that point, but.
Okay. Yeah, no, I mean, that sounds reasonable.
At your request, we can continue, but I think we need date specific is our point. So what we'll end up doing is we'll, we will end up making a motion to continue the 310 Kenneth Welch Site Plan Review for you until May 12th, which is our first meeting in May.
Okay.
That said, with the letter from the Board of Health, and this would really go to your engineers. I guess unless you're going to replace the septic system, it seems like the parking would kind of stay a little bit more elevated. And I don't know if that'll end up making the rest of it elevated, which is fine. But I, I notice on the curb cut in the temporary parking currently, that's the furthest to, I'm going to call it the northwest.
Sure.
Or your furthest left most, if you're looking at the building.
Yep.
Currently, that does actually pitch down into the road. And I believe that on the plan that shows a small catch base in there.
Yep.
Just make sure that the design covers that water flow out. If it needs to turn into a trench drain, that it just gets handled in whatever your design. And again, that's me assuming that if you can't cut down the parking area where the septic leaching field is, that everything probably will be brought up a little bit and that just puts more pitch to the street, which really not supposed to discharge water into the roadway.
Okay. All right. No, we'll also make sure to address that.
Okay. Would any of your group like to speak to anything else tonight?
Hey, how are you guys? Just wanted to stand up quickly and, um, and speak to the, the, the JUCI parking, you know, sort of site plan approval, master plan concept.
If I could, just to restate your name, just for the record.
Yeah, George Adams.
Thank you, George.
So I'm, I'm here representing the ownership group of the, uh, the 310 Kenneth Welch Drive Building. Just really wanted to stand up quickly and sort of address the board and, um, and just introduce ourselves and, and let you guys know that, um, we'll be working diligently over the next, uh, next several months, along with JUCI and Northeast Alternatives to, uh, address some of the comments that, that the board has made relative to the application. And, um, you know, we'll be, be, um, you know, looking forward to working with you guys as a, as a partner here in the future. And, um, and, um, you know, we'll, we'll, uh, just look forward to a long partnership.
Appreciate that. And we do appreciate you guys cleaning up the parking. Like to what it is, is already an improvement. I see less cars along the road, which is great. So we, we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you. We, uh, we took ownership of the building back in mid-January. And, um, you know, since then, we've been, um, working diligently to put the, uh, the correct pieces in place to help us, you know, get our arms around everything there at the site. And, um, so we've, you know, hired a full-time property manager who has a, a full-time 40-hour-a-week employee there, who is, you know, actively addressing concerns as they pop up, things like the, uh, the fire lane and those sorts of things. You know, that person will be, um, you know, proactively reaching out to, to make sure that, that, um, you know, any issues are quickly handled. So.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mark, do you have anything else you want to go into? Or do you want to wait until we get to the next round of plans at this point?
No, I, I think.
Okay. Does anyone else want to say anything or ready to make a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
Motion to continue until May 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM?
Sounds good.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle? Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. We will see you, uh, unless we get written notice for a continuance request on May 12th.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. The next item on our agenda is Two Bedford Street. Uh, we received a letter from a representative from the applicant for a request to continue until, they're saying our April 14th meeting, which I'm just going to check. That is accurate. So again, that's for the site plan review of Two Bedford Street. Mark, I'm sure you saw this also, and there's a request for a meeting, which you may have already had with them.
Yes, I had a meeting today with, with, um, the owner and his representatives. And, uh, we reviewed, um, the comment letter that you have received, reviewed all the items, discussed how they can address the items in order to still, um, basically get that same building with some modifications and some site plan modifications to comply with the zoning. So, um, most of the issues were zoning-related issues. And there was a few other site design-related issues related to parking and traffic and screening and buffering, but, uh, nothing that I don't think that they can't adjust.
So actually, uh, we, I'm happy to continue until April 14th, but I don't think the zoning board of appeals meets again until April 21st. So if they have to go to the zoning board of appeals, they, they may have to recontinue.
Yeah, I don't, uh, yeah, they may have to recontinue. Whether they can complete all the drawing changes or not, I'm not entirely sure. And I don't believe that they'll have to go to the zoning board for the site itself.
So. But it sounds like there are changes that would affect, I should say, may affect the site plan if they're not granted whatever relief by the zoning board.
No, I think they can comply with, with everything that was on my memo without having to go to the zoning board.
Okay. I don't think I got your memo.
Oh.
Uh, which is fine.
Okay.
Make sure we'll get it, but for tonight's purpose, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to continue the site plan review for Two Bedford Street until April 14th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Barbara, Peter?
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle, Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, the site plan review is continued till April 14th for Two Bedford Street. Moving along, next item on our agenda is the fee review project, which I think that's, uh, we have in our packet, the one that we worked on. So I think you have updates, Mark.
Uh, I believe it was sent around, no?
I didn't see it.
Did not make copies to pass out, because I thought it got emailed out.
We, we did get it, but it was, uh, our previous version.
Um, I, okay. Well, I'll run through it, I guess. So this is very, um, so what we had talked about before was, um, changing. So I used the same format, but it, so it looks the same.
Oh, yours is in the red.
Yeah, I, I used the same format. So I copied this format. Then I made the modifications. So the, uh, the current fee is on the left, which is $100 per lot for a A&R currently. And, um, we moved it to $250 per modified lot or $500 per lot. Preliminary plan was $100 per plan. Now it's proposed to be $500 per plan plus, excuse me, $50 per lot. The definitive subdivision plan was $700 plus $100 per lot. And the new, uh, proposed is $2,000 per plan plus 500 per lot. The definitive subdivision plan, if you have submitted a preliminary, is $500 plus 100 per lot currently. And we bumped that up to $1,000 per plan plus $100 per lot. So, um.
Is that a, that's the Form C?
Yep. Yes. Well, it's a Form C with a preliminary plan.
And you said, so it's 1,000 per plant plus 500 per lot or 100?
Yes.
Okay.
500 per lot.
So they have $500 advantage, sorry.
There's a little bit of a reduction in the plan application cost of $500 instead of the 2,000 for just coming in with a Form C.
That's correct.
But they'll pay possibly a little bit more in the cost of lots because they'll have paid 50 first time and then 500 second time.
Yes.
So if there's a lot of lots, it may end up costing a little more.
It'll be similar.
Yep.
Because the amount of time spent processing and sending out notices and reviewing plans and.
You know, it may end up saving them money, not on a fee, but in the engineering. If, 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 during the preliminary, we spot, you know, problems A, B, and C, and they can correct all three, you know, it, it.
Yep. I'm, I'm not opposed to it at all. I think it's.
I don't think we'll see very many of them, but it's still, uh, it's good to have.
Right. You'll, exactly.
You know, I'm sorry, this is in the packet. I just thought this was the same version that we had had originally.
Oh, okay.
So then you have changes? Well, repeat petitions is deleted, basically.
Right. Um, changes, so, um, it was $100 each for each file change. And what we did was $500 plus 200 per lot that gets modified. So if you have a subdivision and you're only changing a couple lots, then you only pay for what you're changing. You're not paying for the other lots in the subdivision that aren't being modified. And then the engineering review, review is as billed by the engineer. Inspection fees would be as billed by the engineer. So, um, and, you know, if we need to change that because we hire on an employee, we can, uh, change that back to a fee based on either linear feet of road or a cost of construction or something like that. But I think initially we'll probably try and, uh, have someone local via, and then local engineer, if we can find someone who's not too involved in other projects to, to do that. This is your surety, which is $15 a linear feet, foot, is how you've done it. And this is, you do this until the acceptance of the roadway?
Yeah.
So after it's complete, but before it's accepted?
Yeah.
So I, so the reason why I didn't really change this is because I wanted to fully understand how you guys deal with this, so.
Yeah, so if we had a 10-lot subdivision come in and initially we maybe held back a release of a couple of the lots until the road got to a certain point, so the lots were our surety, until, say, everything but the top coat was put on, all the drainage structures were in. And they've been selling lots and it's basically moving right along towards the completion. So all they would need to do, once most of the major building construction is done, is top coat the road. So we had a fee that the developer would say, can you release the last lot? I'd like to sell it. And then charge me the fee per the length of road. But they didn't say it, but that's what the fee was set up as.
So the, uh, so the fees basically to ensure they complete the road, everything else.
Yeah.
So rather than doing, so you haven't been doing, because we haven't had this discussion yet, you haven't been doing a complete breakdown of the cost of the construction of the road from.
No, so this is probably a very low fee.
You haven't done, you have not done in the past, like a complete breakdown of construction costs on me.
Yeah.
So that as they complete stuff, you can release bond amounts and then retain what the co, actual cost is. So sometimes, you know, like the light posts may not be in or they might be backordered if they're doing something different. You should be holding money on that. You should be holding money on, um, a bunch of different things that, um, kind of get done at the end. So maybe what we'll do is.
If you need to restructure that, we welcome that.
I, I think maybe what we'll do is we'll restructure that and we'll, um, and it won't be a, a set amount. It'll be, you know, uh, based on the estimate that we'll put together.
Yeah, so you, so that might be the wording is based on the estimate for a percentage of completion of.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great idea.
Yeah. Okay, um, it, it does two things. One is make sure you, if you have a good cost estimates, you can protect the town to ensure that you're holding enough money to complete it so that the developer, should the developer walk away. I've arrived at some towns where there's bonds being held, but they're not really enough to keep the developer. And he's like, what do I, what are you holding? And he thinks for a minute and then he goes, yeah, you can finish it. And he walks out.
I think that happened here in town.
That's happened here too. Yeah. Okay.
I think so.
So with the cost of construction.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear. I think the way it's set up is, um, it needs to get adjusted. So we'll work on that one.
Street acceptance?
Yeah, I guess you had no fee before, so.
What are the three asterisks reference?
Cost incurred by the planning board for advertising mailing public notifications will be borne by the applicant. So I don't know what that's about. I mean, if it's a town-accepted way, there's really no.
We had used an asterisk.
For something else. I took it out. Yeah, I took it out because I didn't think it would apply. Oh, wait, that was my folder here.
So on the first one now, I think it was intended to be included with the Form C.
So the, the asterisk I took out says all costs, cost of all professional consultants, review and subsequent fees as determined by the planning board will be borne by the applicant. I took that out because, I mean, you know, I thought it was unnecessary to add that, but.
Okay.
Well, as long as the asterisks are consistent, because we have three, we have two, and we have one.
Yeah, I just, um, I didn't really. Yeah, I mean, it kind of doesn't apply, but.
Yeah, so maybe it just comes out.
So for site plan review, um, you have, uh, we hadn't discussed this before. Uh, maybe we discussed it a little bit. So you, you have this minor no-traffic drainage or signage issues. And you had 250, so we moved it to five. It's site plan review bylaw, which you had before. And the current proposed one, do not distinguish between a major and a minor. I just left that in there. I'm not sure whether you want to do that or not, but. I mean, how often do people file for a site plan review that? I mean, if they're required to file for site plan review, it's usually something more substantial.
I think they were more of like a change or maybe a, a small addition of a parking area.
Okay.
I'm trying to think. I mean, I, I kind of did them once for, for one of my properties where I did add on some.
That's right. We do like change of use and stuff like that. Okay. That's right, we do like change of use and stuff like that, okay.
Yeah, so it, it, it really would be, it would, in the past, it would come down to the vote of the board to say, is this major, major or minor?
Mm-hmm.
And so the applicant would come in and request that we make that determination, hoping, I guess, that it would be minor. But it really depends on the project, so it left some subjectivity to how we.
Okay.
Fee that.
All right, um, I'll, I'll work on rewording that, so it's more like change of use. I don't know what signage issues. We don't review signage?
Uh, we'll look at assigned location.
Yeah.
On the site plan review, we look at the sign location, even though we're not the permitting entity.
Under, under, if it's a site plan review application already, right? People don't file a site plan review just because they want to move a sign or anything.
Right.
Put up a new sign. Okay, all right. I just wanted to understand that. Um, okay, so we'll, we'll look at that.
I think that came about, Mark, just for some history because there were a couple times that plans were coming back.
Right.
And it's more time and more printing and more staff and it's like, come on, just try to follow the rules and look at the guidelines before you come in and.
Right.
Draft a plan. So that was kind of the intention there.
Okay. So, uh, special.
I do like the idea of kind of drawing it in or, or referencing something that's in an existing site plan bylaw too. That would make sense if there's something that could kind of trigger that's exist, you know, what a minor versus a major possibly.
That would be a fall amendment. If we're gonna, if we're gonna put it in the bylaw, then we would amend that in the fall.
Yeah, well, you already have, for example, uh, change of use. I can see what else is in there and.
Yeah, you might be able to structure something in this.
Exactly, in this, based on the wording in the bylaws, so, okay. Um, special permit for the development opportunities district. So, um, I made it similar to site plan review. A thousand dollars for the first acre plus five hundred per additional developed acre.
Does developed mean would developed include parking area?
Parking area, drainage, any area that's within the area that's being, uh, site construction.
So the old time it would be excluded is if that acreage was left natural?
And, um, so the special permit in the water development district. So I have some question marks about whether, um.
I know we had some correspondence with town council when we were at some point in this.
Okay.
They had off the, we, we were all over the boards with these last four items. And I think basically council had steered us towards, uh, I, I forget the terminology they used, but it had to be justified by the means. You know, whatever the applicant was doing, it had to be somewhat justified. So it almost, I think, makes sense to make all four of these items tiered very similarly.
Okay, all right. Okay, so this is just two little sections within the water resource district. Or if someone wants to, um. All right. All right. Well, I don't know whether that's really allows for new uses. They not be expanded or altered without a special permit. So, um, for certain things that are not permitted but are already there is what the special permit in the district is for, so. Um, yeah, so we could make it the same, like you said.
Why did we come up with twelve thousand five hundred dollars? I don't remember that.
Yeah, those last four were all just twelve five, so.
It's because we got so tired by the time we got to the end of this list.
Well, that was what I think council had said was you, you have to sort of justify what you're doing. You can't make one different than the rest if they're all very similar. So I think that's when we just had twelve five, because we were all stuck on, uh, the length of time that, it's the combination of the development opportunities district and a forty-three D permitting process, which was, we had that both under one roof for the hospital property.
Right.
So it just seemed like, it was a lot of work and it was justifiable to say that if we got a planner, that that cost would be a reasonable cost. So with these items and the, the process that we went through for that project, we felt like ultimately that's where we would want to end up to recover some of the costs incurred by the town for your time or Kathy's time, um, to, you know, rather than have that just straight up come out of taxpayer pockets that that come out of an applicant's pocket that actually put the work on us.
Right.
Um, so looking at all of these items, then I'm looking at their chapter forty-three D that drops to two hundred per unit rather than five hundred per additional acre. Uh, in forty-three D, I don't know if the unit.
Yeah, that's housing. Those last two would be housing.
Not necessarily. The forty-three D is just a, an expedited permitting process for any project that the state deems.
Mm-hmm.
You can do this quick and will help.
Right.
By allowing you to deem it a forty-three D. So again, the hospital was a forty-three D. And it's nothing to do with housing.
Okay.
So that's right. I'm just cautious to say unit because that was one unit and.
Right.
One very big unit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to break it out.
So, yeah, we can move it, but if someone's doing a high density housing in a small parcel of land, they're not gonna, like if.
Then the acres don't apply the same.
Yeah, like if that project, let's say, doesn't happen and they redesign it and now they have, you know, five hundred units of housing on, you know, ten acres.
Yeah, you'd want it per unit.
There's your fees, Barbara.
We need, we need to approve this. We need to, we need to come in with this.
So what if you, could you differentiate?
I could, yeah.
What if you said forty-three D residential housing per unit, forty-three D commercial industrial or business industrial per acre?
Yeah, right.
And you'd, so you differentiate just based on the zoning?
Yep.
Or the, the use?
Okay, yeah, no, that's, that makes sense.
I understand why there's questions here with the water development district. We shouldn't, we don't need that. We should take it out.
I think we just included it because we included all of the special permit.
Of all the things that were listed, okay.
Yeah, so I think with the forty-three D, if you just could give the differentiation and then I'm fine with smart growth overlay being basically mirrored, because that would always be housing.
Okay, so I will, um, let's do something on the last page.
So you added waiver?
Yeah.
Now, the waiver was in the draft before somehow it turned blue, um.
Is that per waiver?
Uh-huh.
A per waiver?
Per waiver. Oh, I know why it's blue, because we actually talked about instead of putting a fee on the waiver that we should see what items keep coming up for, you know, grant these waivers. And we were going to say if, if they're, they're happening consistently to more so address it within the rules and regs rather than.
Two different things there though, and I agree, but so if we think that the cost of a waiver should have a fee and a hundred dollars is it, that's fine, but I think to Michelle's point, we did discuss. So in our rules and regs, we have whatever laid out for our requirements for a subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's streetlights or granite curbing or whatever, and.
Sidewalks.
Oftentimes, an applicant comes in and they want ten waivers. And it's basically, you know, no berm, no streetlights, no street trees, no, on down the list.
Mm-hmm.
So it comes to a point of why do we have these waivers or why do we have these requirements if we just always waive them?
Right.
Uh, is I think what Michelle's getting at, do we go back over the rules and regs and we clean them up? Or do we just keep the waivers on the understanding that that's a leverage for, get, get a development to look a little bit better somewhere else if you don't grant a waiver?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the, the hundred dollars a waiver, I mean, someone's gonna, yeah, it's, they're gonna.
Hundred dollars is a lot cheaper than two miles of granite curb.
So they're gonna complain about having to pay, having to pay the fee, but if you grant the waivers, they're, they're gonna be way, way ahead. But again, like I said before, is we, we need to go through your regs because they do require like full blown, probably, you know, like nice roadways because they're based on old specs. Um, and we need to look at those. I mean, if Lakeville's not requiring, you know, granite curbing and big white roadways with sidewalks and all the things that are in the rules and regs, then maybe we need to sit there down and figure out, um, well, that's not what you want because you're not requiring it, or maybe you only want it under certain circumstances. So we make, you know, in, in a lot of towns, they kind of, we have multi-tiered things. So if the road is longer than, or if it's gonna carry more traffic than so many units, um, then those roads need to meet this higher design standard.
Agreed.
So, um, so that's something, you know, we'll.
That's our summer project with the rules and regs.
Summer project.
So that being said, should we leave the, the waiver line item in with an amount until at a future date we address those things?
That's a good idea.
Your recommendation is?
It, I, I, I don't think it really matters either way, so.
I think it probably has a better appearance if we do a hundred dollar fee per waiver that the town's just not giving away for nothing.
Right.
It appears that there is some return, even though it's small.
Right. Okay, so we leave that in at a hundred dollars.
And then I like the last note that you had there, uh, the reduction of a fee based on preserving open space.
Well, that was in there before.
Yeah.
I don't think that's, um.
It's not a requirement.
I don't think you should do that.
No?
No?
No, because people will argue, well, we didn't touch that. Well, we weren't gonna touch it anyways. And I don't think it was, that's kind of like the density bonus you have. It's like you should require, these are the standards we want. If you meet them, then you, you, we review it and you can get approved. And we don't have this kind of, well, if you do this, these really concrete standards. I mean, a couple of them, for, for example, today, uh, they'll work around it on two Bedford Street because he, he does want to get it approved and not wait to some subsequent town meeting where a site plan review gets approved in the spring and then we, we work on changing the density bonuses in the fall and maybe get rid of those, um, and figure out what's a really good, appropriate one standard for each of the districts to have for lot coverage. Um, he didn't want to wait, so he's gonna be able to adjust his plan and meet all of your requirements for the density bonus, so.
For the se- for the second density bonus, like a, like a seventy percent?
Yes.
Seventy percent?
Yes.
Yeah, because I looked at that plan and I was like, wow, it's a.
Yeah.
Asphalt town.
Yes.
But I don't think he was deducting for the wetlands or the drainage basins either for.
Well, they, they don't have a full set of calculations on the, on the chart, so that's one of the comments is that they, they adjust for that. Some of their buffers weren't right, so they have to adjust those. Um, I think when they, one of the key things on that site, they, if they adjust the grade in the back, they were building up that back parking lot as opposed to, it's already been halfway excavated, uh, because there was a garage in the back that doesn't exist anymore. So if they remove the rest of the material and instead of building walls in the front, they put the walls in the back to hold back the, um, around the property, then they have more flexibility in adjusting the parking in the travel lane and, and such so that they can then make the other adjustments to the front of the building to make, um, some, some, uh, other adjustments to be able to meet the requirements, so.
Okay, good. So you want to strike out that last thing there?
I would like to strike that.
That's fine. I'm all right with that. You?
So, yeah.
I don't see where that.
So here's the thing. We have been working on this for so long. Tonight is my last planning board meeting. I would love to see this approved, subject to the changes that Mark is gonna make, and if you guys have to have another draft in two weeks, at least we can say we got it done. So can I make a motion that we accept this current planning board fee schedule with the following modifications? We are going to remove the special permit water development district.
I thought we were just changing that.
Changing that to, to match the site.
Oh, you're gonna change it? Okay, then change it to match the fees for the other special permitting and breaking out the, uh, business zoning versus the residential zoning.
For the forty-three D.
Unit or the, the five hundred, right, and then taking out the, uh, the note at the very end and fixing the asterisks.
And he was also going to change the fifteen linear feet per road surety and rewrite that whole section.
Yeah, but that was gonna be based on actual cost.
Right. So that, but there's, there's language that's gonna change in this.
Yes.
This is a living document, so you guys can always change it again in a month, but at least we'll have something approved. So I make the motion.
Motion to approve with the changes as noted?
Yes, correct.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
At our.
Cross it off the list.
April fourteenth meeting, you'll show us that revised?
Yep. Okay, awesome.
Very good. Um, we have a couple of zoning board of appeals petitions. Uh, twelve Bristol Street and twenty-four Pilgrim Road. Uh, I took a quick glance. They look like some residential changes. One's a, uh, a septic upgrade and one's a, uh, home.
No, one's a, um.
Garage.
Garage.
Yeah.
Nice looking place, dude. One is a garage and the other one's a septic upgrade.
Oh, it's not a new home?
One's a home and one's a garage.
Okay, with a septic system.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion that the planning board has no comment on either of these projects.
Yeah. It's fine.
A second? Did you get a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second to make no comment. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Planning board would make no comment to the zoning board of appeals on those two hearings. Uh, we have two sets of minutes. We have a set of minutes for January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, which was a remote meeting. Everybody was present at, uh, has everybody got a chance to review that one?
Yes.
Yes.
And I did as well. It looked pretty good to me. So I make a motion to approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes as drafted.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries. Next set of minutes, uh, we had three members present. It was myself, Barbara, and Michelle. This was February tenth. This was February tenth, uh, I did review these minutes as well. Uh, looked pretty good to me, does anybody else that was present have any comment?
No comment.
Michelle?
Make a motion to approve.
I think they look good.
Uh, I have a motion, I will second that motion, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Uh, Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, motion carries with a majority. Uh. Get the minutes. Uh, have item six, review correspondence.
Um, I have all the stuff from the other cities and towns, it's mostly just, um. Accessory apartments and a few other small things, nothing that is impactful to the town, so.
Okay.
And, um.
What's the accessory unit, somebody's doing, what, the town's?
Yeah, I mean, we get, you get the public, so, some of these towns send out, um, notices to the abutting towns, whether it's board of appeals or planning board. Um, their rules and regs say you, you need to notify the abutting town. So, like, there is a condo development in Taunton that's been submitted for two fifteen High Street in Taunton.
So they're just noticed, they're not changes of existing rules that are happening?
No, it's not changes of their rules and regs, and you get these like, um, all the time, here's another one from Taunton, something for a waiver of furniture requirements.
Okay.
I mean, so you get something like, might be big, something small, the only, I, I kind of quickly look at them, but. So if it's something like on the town line that might impact some residents, that's part of the reasons why.
Or say a casino?
Yeah, something of regional impact, yes.
Or mega warehouse?
Yeah.
So some towns have it in there, we don't have anything in our rules and regs about notifying abutting towns or things like that, so.
Okay. Uh, any old business? Or any new business that's not on the agenda tonight, that I even like to discuss?
There was one thing and I can't remember.
There was something Will, um, had, uh, Tracy sent out, did you wanna talk about that, or put it on the next agenda maybe?
Which, which one, one thing kind of had to, what did she send out?
The, the purchase and sale for the country club?
Oh, the, uh, taking the, taking the land out of, um, farm.
Out of chapter sixty-one.
When are we meeting again, what's the date?
Next meeting is on April fourteenth, seven P M.
Okay, so we, I would have to have the, if we did wanna comment on that. Uh, the next morning, I'd have to have it here, see.
Hmm, tomorrow morning?
No. April fifteenth, they're asking.
Fifteen, I would have to, yeah, so if, I mean, basically, if you want, I can tell you right now, so the Lakeville Country Club. Is under agreement for, uh, fifteen million dollars, it's, there's two parcels of land that is subject to sixty-one A and the other one is subject to sixty-one B. So those are the agricultural and recreational tax, um, properties. So, um, they have submitted a, um, uh, the purchase and sales to the town. And the way it works is if they have a, if they're, so once you take it out, it, it's still subject to the town's. Uh, the, 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 the statute for another year, so, um. So if you submit a bona fide offer, the town has the right of first refusal, but the town, town has the right of first refusal at that number.
Yeah, ask you a question?
Yes.
So in this case, there's two parcels that are being included, those parcels are able to be considered by the town independently, not as a group, because they're individual parcels. So the purchase and sales price should be divided between the parcels, right?
I think one's nine hundred, one's fifteen million, they're two separate prices.
They're two separate prices, okay.
Two separate purchases and sales upon them, uh, one is substantially higher in the order of thirteen million and one's about twelve, so that. And then there's one parcel that's, I believe, not subject to, so.
The, the total was fifteen million for both parcels?
Fifteen million for the two parcels. Subject to the, I don't have.
I thought I saw fifteen million and nine hundred thousand of these.
Nine hundred thousand, yeah.
How many acres?
Uh, fairly, well, it's the entire golf course.
There's a hundred, a hundred acres of buildable land, land over there, hundred and seventy-four, yeah.
Oh, one seventy-four?
Yep.
Okay.
So the, um.
How much is that, an acre?
Why do you, where'd you see that?
So the purchase and sales have been reviewed by town council, who has determined that they are what's called a bona fide offer. So the town has thirty days to make that determination that it's a bona fide offer or not. If not, you have thirty, in that thirty days, you have to notify the, uh, applicant that their offer is not valid. So if it had all sorts of conditions, this, these have no conditions, they're just straight bona fide offers as determined by council. So the town would have to match the purchase price. If they were not bona fide offers, or let's say they took it out of a golf course use to do something himself and just change the use. Then the town would have the option to purchase it at, um, appraised value. But this is a bona fide offer, so we have to purchase it at the, um, offered price. So, um, that would be fifteen million dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, you check the goat.
So.
So what happened to a fair market value?
It's only if, um, only if it's determined not to be a bona fide offer or, um, if they change the use. So they take it out of the golf course and they decide that they want to, um.
They wanna retain ownership, but change use.
Ownership, but change the use to something else.
If they wanted to turn it into a solar farm? So it was being used for agricultural, now they wanna change the use, then it's, it's market.
So they're not saying?
If they've got an offer, then it's the offer.
Yeah.
As long as the offer's a valid offer.
So they're not saying what, that they're changing the use, though, they're just.
Well, it says in there, uh, the proposed use is a warehouse distribution.
Oh, no, it does say that?
Does anybody?
Which doesn't comply with the existing zoning of business zone, which that property's zoned.
It was, it was zones gonna get here one way or the other.
No, but, well, you have, so the same zoning that you applied to the.
I don't wanna go too far until that tonight, because it's not on front of us, it's just, uh, sixty-one A issue is tonight.
It's just the concept right now, plan, but there's a bona fide offer on the property and that's what.
So. On that note, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.